Where are the usual suspects that are not here?
Check Pat. She good? We're good?
Charlie's on a cruise, Charlie Council.
Oh, then Bill would be too, probably. They go to take them cruises to get their own time.
Oh, yeah, nobody sits in there, they leave their seats open.
That's the designated.
There's probably a print, a body print in the cushion.
That's a good color on you.
Oh, thanks.
Very good color on you.
What am I, Chuck Liver?
No, you look great.
Oh, Howard, you look stunning.
Put you up, you look awesome, too.
Good morning, it is 9:00 AM. Welcome to the April 18th, 2018, City Council meeting. Two weeks went by, just like that, we're back here already. Please stand first for an invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity in government to share to this meeting for a time of refreshment of spirit and fellowship. Help us to work and think and pray together that we may be more perfectly fitted to serve you, those with whom we work in the task in which we have been called. Help us, God, to look wise and reflect thy wisdom, fill us with high ideals, empower us with love and goodwill to all, that we may rightly lead in the paths of chivalry and honor. And all this we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united all, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you, John. Before we start with the proclamations, let the record reflect that all City Council members and officials are present. First, we have two proclamations, the first of which is Arbor Day, which Councilmember Pravky will present.
Good morning and thank you, I'm honored to do this. Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, beautify our community, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal wherever planted. And whereas the city has celebrated Arbor Day and has been recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation as a Tree City USA for 24 years, has received the Tree City USA Growth Award for 12 years, and was awarded the prestigious Sterling Award by the National Arbor Day Foundation in February 2013. And whereas the city desires to continue to support efforts to care for our community forest and educate our citizens on its importance. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida does hereby proclaim April 27, 2018, as Arbor Day and urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Passed and duly adopted in regular session is 18th day of April, 2018, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, signed Rachel Keesley, Mayor. And accepting is Joan LeBeau, our Urban Design Manager.
Joan LeBeau, Urban Design Manager, thank you very much. On behalf of the city, I accept this proclamation. And we will be celebrating Arbor Day in May this year. So we will keep you informed and stay tuned to our new program. Thank you. Thank you. And next, we have a proclamation for Law Day. Councilmember Cummings will present.
Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Whereas Law Day is the, sorry, in the words of President Dwight D. Ozerhour, who established nationwide commemoration, the day of national dedication for the principled government under law. And whereas the United States Constitution best legislative, executive, and judicial power under Congress, the President, and one Supreme Court respectively. And whereas the three separate powers of the national government share power and each also shares the check on the power of the others. And whereas separation of powers provides a framework for freedom, but this framework is not self-executing, as we, the people, must continually act to ensure our constitutional democracy endures, preserving our liberties and guaranteeing our rights. And whereas 2018 Law Day theme enables us to reflect on the separation of powers is fundamental to our constitutional purpose and to consider how our governmental system is working for ourselves and our prosperity. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida does hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 1, 2018, as Law Day Separation of Powers Framework for Freedom Day in Punta Gorda, and urges all community residents, schools, businesses, and civic groups, news media, legal professionals, and law students to support this national day by participating in Law Day activities and to use this occasion to preserve and strengthen the rule of law. Passed and duly adopted in regular session is 18th day of April, 2018, City of Punta Gorda. Mayor Rachel Keesley, this is presented to David Levitt.
Oh.
Thank you. Laws are good. At least the ones that we like. Thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have a couple of special presentations, two service awards, and then a certificate and a new branding.
So let's start with the person who's been here the longest. And this is, if you ever had questions with your utility billing or collections, you've probably reached this person at some point in time over the past 30 years. Shelley Barber, come on up, 30-year.
30 years.
One of my last duties here at the city is I have the honor of giving you the 30 years. They want to take your picture? And Shelley started 30 years ago as a meter reader of the city. And she got smart after four years and said it's too hot and buggy, so she came inside. And from what I understand, she still is called upon when they can't have trouble, the new people are having trouble finding meters. She still remembers where some of the meters are, so. When they have a difficult customer, they pass it on to Shelley because her infectious laugh and her sense of humor just really comes forth. I know you're an animal lover, you take in animals like crazy. And whenever, and we get all these compliment letters and they go, you should say it's because of Shelley. So I'm very happy, I've worked with her 25 years. I'm just, this is my last official duty I'm saying on a 30-year employee anyway, but good luck to you, okay? You've been really good. Thank you.
No speech?
No, the next person will take care of that.
Oh, good, oh, good.
The next person is a 10-year service award. For, some people know him as Lieutenant Tony Laurenti from the Fire Department. We know him because he's got what's called the gift of gab. Tony, come on up.
And he looks good in a tie.
Ray Briggs, Ray Briggs Fire Chief. I'm going to tell you a little bit about Tony that maybe you don't know, a few things, so he may get embarrassed, we'll see. So first of all, congratulations. Tony and his family have lived in the area since the 1930s. Didn't know that. He's married to his wife here from Punta Gorda. And in fact, they were engaged under a tree at Gilchrist Park. Which is interesting. They have one child, Enzo, who attends Punta Gorda Middle. We've all known, learned to grow and love him. Tony actually left Charlotte County and went to work, he enrolled in the Air Force. And he did a tour under the first, in the first Gulf War. And after the Bosnian conflict, he came back. He actually joined the National Guard during the Second Gulf War. And actually served our state during Hurricane season 2004. So sir, and that's where he developed a passion for the fire service. And ultimately, we were able to scoop him up at that point. Just when he's worked, since he's worked for us in the past 10 years, I got to tell you what a blessing to our department. And just read a couple of things that he has accomplished. So number one, he takes great pride in serving his hometown. And that level of commitment and passion for his hometown has truly been admirable and contagious. So we really appreciate that. He is one of our fire inspectors, he's got that certification. He's a pump operator and engineer, a rescue diver, and certainly has grown to the rank of lieutenant. So as one of our lead paramedics in our early program, he helped develop our ALS program as well. So in the first 10 years, quite an accomplishment. And we're really looking forward to the next. So congratulations.
How are y'all doing today? I'll try to keep it pretty short. I'm a big fan, like my passion in civics and civil service. And I dedicated my life to civil service when I was young, 17 is when I first signed up for the military. And then I've tried to just continue throughout my life that. I mean, it's not the most glamorous at times, but to me, it's the most important thing I can do is serve my country and, more precisely, serve this community, my community. It's a privilege to me to be able to serve the town I live in, so. And yeah, the first 10 years, and I look forward to the next 20, or next 10.
Yeah, these are the kind of people that you get to respond when you call for services. And thank you, Tony. I first met Tony, he was, he was the rep for the union when I first became a council member. So he gave that job up pretty quickly after that. He didn't last long in that position. But it was, it was good to get to know, know the fire, the fire staff and immediately when I first became a council member. So thank you for that, thank you. Okay, next, we have a special certificate. We have the IE, IE MO, which is the Institute for Elected Municipal Officials, Level 3, the Leadership Challenge, which was completed by Councilmember Jaha Cummings.
Thank you.
Excellent. And next, we have a special presentation by the Peace River Wildlife Center to introduce their new branding.
Good morning, everybody. Pat Campagna, a board member of the Peace River Wildlife Center. I think that whenever we get referred to by anybody in the community, it's usually we're called the bird sanctuary. And we are so much more than a bird sanctuary. And our new branding is going to reflect the fact that not only do we take care of avian creatures, but we also take care of all mammals and also reptiles. We, as we get ready to, for big changes next year, we decided to look to change our branding and so that it reflects a total picture of who we are. And this is our new branding. We also want to thank the City Council who have been continuously supporting us. We totally appreciate it. We also want the community to know that we are not going to be breaking ground this year, that we probably will be delayed until next April. We are waiting, as is the city, waiting for the design of the park to be completed. But we're going to use this time in a very good way. And we look forward to breaking ground and sharing with the community a brand-new Peace River Wildlife Center. We have certificates of appreciation for City Council for everything that they've done for us and their continued support of us.
With the new logo.
With the new logo.
My gosh, that's beautiful.
With the new logo.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, very nice.
So keep, stay tuned. Thank you.
Excellent.
I know. I didn't get one for Howard, I said, oh, okay. We'll definitely get it to you.
Stop liver.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have introduction of, introduction of border committee member nominees. If your name is in the running for a border committee and you would like to briefly introduce yourself, now would be the time. Would anybody like to introduce themselves for a border committee position? Please take this podium right over here. State your name and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hi, my name is Adrienne Andre. I'm interested in the Historic Preservation Board. I'm a Realtor at Remax Harbor, I grew up here, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Bradford Gamblin. And I am a nominee for Historic Preservation Board position. I am an alternate now, and I've been privileged to serve on virtually every meeting since I've been named an alternate and would like to move to the permanent position.
Thank you, Brad. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we will move into the public hearing portion of the agenda. We have four public hearings and one quasi-judicial, the first of which is GA 03-18.
Yes, this is the first reading, which was continued from March 21st. And I'll read this by title only. In accordance with the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 6, Boats, Docks, and Waterways, Article 1, in general, Section 6-24, Use of Boat Ramps, Punta Gorda Code to amend regulations relating to the use of public boat ramps and to establish regulations for the use of public day docks within the City of Punta Gorda, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date. And this, the draft that you have before you was modified to include the city's councils' changes from the last meeting.
Okay. Yes, Lynn?
There's just one thing that I noted was not included in the ordinance changes. It's something we talked about at the last meeting. We talked about limiting the maximum length of dinghies on the Gilchrist Day Dock in order to keep the larger boats off of that dock. And that is not incorporated into the document. And as I recall from the last meeting, we talked about 11 feet. But I have since talked to a number of people who have dinghies that are 11.6 to 11.9. So I would like to make a recommendation that we add the verbiage that dinghies no longer than 12 feet be added into the ordinance.
Sorry, that was 12 feet?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I would suggest that we add a new sub-paragraph 5 to sub-paragraph B. And perhaps we can read, it would read, "Vessel stocking at the Gilchrist Landing Day Docks shall be limited to a maximum overall length of 12 feet."
Obviously, I mean, if we have an emergency situation and someone has to use the dock for a short period of time, it would be a different story. But for general purposes, I think we probably need to include that just so we don't have the same situation occur again. And otherwise, I think all the changes are exactly what we talked about.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Lynn, I have an 11-foot 6-inch dock. I can use that.
Well, we're going to be measuring, so I'm glad you're, I'm glad we're putting 12 feet, so you're, you're able to do what you need to do. Any other comments? Okay, this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on GA 03-18, now would be the time. Please take this podium, state your name. Anybody like to speak on GA 03-18? Anybody? Last call, come to the podium. You've got to speak in the microphone, you've got to state your name, and you have three minutes.
This should take less. My name is Richard Kershoffer, I live in PGI. I have a comment that may or may not be directly related to it, but it's the parking at the ramp at Lashley Park. We've gone several times with our boat loaded up to find no parking. There's no alternate parking if you have a boat on a trailer. And in all cases, there's plenty of spots taken by single cars. If you go in the afternoon, where it is legal to park with a single car, you may still find the same situation. So since a lot of the homes can no longer launch boats from their houses and the area's growing, there's more demand. And I think single cars should not be allowed to park there any time. And that way, it'll alleviate a little bit of the stress. So we've also gone by car just to see if parking's available and watched other people circle and leave with their boats because there's no place to park and there's no alternate parking. And you can drive over to Ponce Park and find the same situation. And so your, your day ends, and you take your boat home, and you disappoint your company. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on GA 03-18? You've got to come to the podium, state your name, you have three minutes. Anybody else, last call.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. This, this ordinance only talks about the day dock situation. It does not address any parking in Lashley Park, but we'll note that.
Move approval of GA-03-18?
As amended.
As amended. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance as amended. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have ZA 02-18.
Yes, this is the first reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. In accordance with the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Punta Gorda Code, Chapter 26, Land Development Regulations, Article 16, Application Review and Approval Requirements, Section 16.8, Special Exception Approval, Paragraph Q1, Extending the Termination of Use for Special Exception Approvals, which require permitting from non-city governmental agencies, providing for conflict and severability and providing effective date.
Good morning, Lisa Hanen, zoning official for the record. Special exceptions expire two years from the date of approval unless a permit or occupancy permit has been issued for the use. City Council recently approved a special exception request. However, the project will require extensive state and federal permitting, which is anticipated to take over two years to secure. Due to the time and expense in preparing the complex permitting applications, the applicant opted to seek City Council, the city's approval for the use first. As the code is currently written, there's no flexibility in the two-year termination timeframe. The proposed amendment would allow the City Council to grant additional time, up to five years, for approved special exception uses, which require extensive state and federal permitting. An application for an extension of the approved special exception must be made no less than 90 days prior to the date of the expiration of the special exception. As part of the application, the property owner shall demonstrate that since the date of the special exception approval, it has been pursuing in good faith all required government, governmental authorizations for its proposed use and additional time is necessary to secure all such approvals. There was one typo on the last sentence. It said addition time, it should be additional time, we can change that, correct that. Planning Commission and Urban Design Staff recommend approval of ZA 02-18.
And just so it's clear, it would be a total overall of five years, not, not five plus the two.
Okay. Any questions or comments for staff?
David's comment is consistent with the conversation that we've had before, so.
Okay, if any, this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on ZA 02-18, now would be the time. Would anybody like to speak on ZA 02-18? Last call, please stand, rise, and make your way to this podium if you would like to speak on ZA 02-18.
Move to close public hearing. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Motion to approve ZA-02-18. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve ZA 02-18 with the, with the correction. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next, we have ZA 03-18.
Can we just give a two-minute break so we can pick?
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Before we hear that, we got to fix our little timer. So we have the IT director, so, two minutes, talk amongst yourselves. Okay, we're going to continue on now with ZA 03-18.
Yes, and this is the first reading, which I'll read by title only. In accordance with the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Punta Gorda Code, Chapter 26, Land Development Regulations, Article 3, Regulating Districts, Section 3.1B, Overlay Districts, Adding Section 3.19 Airport Protection Overlay District, APO, Pursuant to Chapter 333 Florida Statutes to Establish Airport Protection Zoning Regulations Within the City of Punta Gorda for Property in the Vicinity of Public-Use Airports in the City Limits of the City of Punta Gorda, Providing for Conflict and Severability and Providing an Effective Date.
Good morning, Lisa Hanen, zoning official. This ordinance is being brought before you pursuant to the statutory requirements of Chapter 333 Florida statutes. All governments in the state of Florida are required to adopt airport protection standards for lands within the vicinity of a public-use airport by implementing their own land development regulations at a local level. The purpose of these regulations is to establish reasonable protections for the airport operations of, and aircraft, to minimize the exposure of adjacent properties to the airport hazards and noise, and to prohibit incompatible land uses and structures around the airports. Portions of the downtown and the loop properties fall within this airport protection area. The draft ordinance is mirrored to Charlotte County's Airport Protection Ordinance adopted in 2017, and there have been no changes or updates to the Charlotte County's ordinance since adoption. Planning Commission and Urban Design recommend approval of ZA 03-18.
Questions for staff? No. This is ZA 03-18. If anybody would like to speak on this, this now would be the time. ZA 03-18, Airport Protection Overlay District. Anybody like to speak on that item? Please make your way to this podium if you would like to speak. Last call, anybody like to speak on ZA 03-18?
Move to close public hearing.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move approval of ZA-03-18?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve ZA 03-18. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have ZA 05-18.
Yes, this is the first reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. In accordance with the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Punta Gorda Code, Chapter 26, Land Development Regulations, Article 3, Regulating Districts, Section 3.13M, SRO, Special Residential Overlay District, to clarify regulations relating, regarding fence heights, providing for conflict and severability and providing effective date.
Good morning again, Lisa Hanen, zoning official. This is being brought back to you after discussion regarding fence height. It's, staff has to interpret the code literally. And the code originally stated 48 inches overall height. Their contractors have expressed the need for a little bit of wiggle room the way the ground is contoured at times to make a fence be evenly installed. So this amendment would allow for the fence panels not to exceed 48 inches in height, and the maximum vertical clearance between the finish grade and the bottom of the panel shall be no more than four inches. And fence posts shall not exceed 54 inches above finish grade. And in addition, that any fence or wall being used as a residential swimming pool barrier in accordance with state law shall be permitted to meet the minimum barrier requirements required by the Residential Pool Safety Act.
My question is, do we talk to the fence contractors? Did we talk to the gentleman that had come back here? Did we run this by him?
He has seen this, yes.
Okay, and he was okay with it?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for staff? This is ZA 05-18. If anybody would like to speak on this item, now would be the time. Please take this podium to my right, state your name, you have three minutes.
Wendy Mueller, this is really just a question. Are the fences that already exist going to be grandfathered? Or if needed to be replaced, would they have to drop to four feet?
The existing fences that are non-conforming to the new regulations would be considered as legal non-conformities, so they can continue. And with, with respect to non-conformities in our code, Lisa, would you?
Once a non-conformity is removed or has to be removed or replaced, it has to be installed or constructed in conformance with the current code.
Now, the question would be whether that applies to the entire fence or individual panels?
If the, it would depend on the amount. If it's more than 50% of the value of the fence, then the entire thing would have to come into conformance. But this is for Special Residential Overlay District only, which has had a maximum fence height of 48 inches. Which has had a maximum fence height of forty-eight inches since, I believe, the eighties. So this doesn't include the downtown districts. This is for Punta Gorda Isles, Burnstour Isles, and Burnstour Meadows only.
Yeah, so it's no change?
Yeah, this gives it more flexibility. Because in the past, we were failing the fence permits because of the four inches, And they needed that little bit to make it work.
Correct.
Anybody else like to speak on GA-05-18? Make your way to the podium. Last call, anybody? GA-05-18.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move approval of GA-05-18?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve GA-05-18. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next, we have a quasi-judicial SE-02-18, Which, anybody who wants to speak needs to be sworn in.
Anyone that's going to be providing evidence or testimony Needs to rise to be sworn in by the clerk at this time, please.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, And nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
When you're ready to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, And indicate that you've been sworn.
This is SE-02-18, a request by Roy Stockrel As agent for Valiant PG Corp, property owner, for a special exception Pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 16.8, Punta Gorda Code, To allow a detoxification and substance abuse treatment center Not primarily associated with a primary medical facility Within the Medical Overlay District as a use permitted by special exception Pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 3.17F4, Punta Gorda Code, A property-zoned neighborhood center addressed 610 East Olympia Avenue, Punta Gorda, Florida.
Okay, so what's going to happen is staff has thirty minutes to make a presentation, And then the applicant has thirty minutes to make their presentation. Then we open it up for public comment, and then at the end, they both can respond.
Sure.
Good morning, Lisa Hanen, zoning official, and I have been sworn. I'd like to enter the staff report into the record by reference in its entirety. The request is to operate a residential detoxification And substance abuse treatment center in an existing structure At 610 East Olympia Avenue, located in the Neighborhood Center zoning district, Which is within the Medical Overlay District. There were some additional findings and concerns that were raised Regarding security measures of the facility, And the applicant has provided the following additional information. Security measures will include thirty-two closed-circuit television cameras And sixteen cameras installed on each floor. All perimeter doors are actively alarmed twenty-four hours per day. The center will also have twenty-four-hour staff supervision. The facility will be designated to accommodate twenty-two clients at a time. Conclusions. Conclusion number one. The property-zoned neighborhood center involves within the Medical Overlay District. The city's adopted Comprehensive Plan 2040 defines the Medical Overlay District. This area exists to promote the development of top-quality medical services In a campus-type approach, which is intended to foster streamlined, Seamless, and more efficient delivery of medical services. Conclusion number two. The existing eighty-eight, eighty-eight-hundred-sixty-five-square-foot building, Two-story building met the development standards, Including parking, architecture, and landscaping when constructed in nineteen ninety-three. Conclusion number three. It is staff's opinion that the proposed use of a residential detoxification And substance abuse center would not create any hazardous Or conflicting pedestrian or vehicular traffic conditions Within the adjacent neighborhood. Conclusion number four. The special exception application is for a residential detoxification And substance abuse center only. Other addiction treatments, including but not limited to sex addiction, Gambling addiction, et cetera, are not permitted at this facility. Staff recommended conditions of approval. Facility is required to notify the City of Punta Gorda Police Department Immediately if a patient leaves on their own accord without completing the program. Number two, all residents to be accompanied, are to be accompanied By facility staff member during all buddy walks. Three, if a registered sex offender is admitted for treatment, Under state law, the offender must register with the City of Punta Gorda Police Department Within forty-eight hours as required by Florida Statute 775.21 parent six. Four, any deficient landscaping must be removed and/or replaced To conform with the approved landscape plan on file, Which is required by code to be maintained in perpetuity. Number five, this approval is for residential detoxification substance abuse center. Other addiction treatments, including but not limited to sex addiction And gambling addiction, are not permitted. Urban Design recommends approval of SE-02-18 With the above stated conclusions, And the Punta Gorda Development Review Committee and Planning Commission Also recommended approval of the request.
Thank you. Does that conclude your presentation?
concludes my presentation. Thank you.
So now the applicant would have time to make their presentation?
Good morning, Council Roy Stockrel from Valiant PG Corp. Back in November, we purchased the property on Olympia, And with the intention of moving forward with bringing An addiction treatment program, residential program, to the city of Punta Gorda. At that time, we've started moving forward with, with this process and ended up here today. So what we're proposing to do is, we're proposing twenty-two beds For residential inpatient treatment of drug and alcohol addiction treatment. I did not realize that we were not talking about gambling addiction being included in there. It's not, not a big point, but we do get dual diagnosis clients Who sometimes have an alcohol addiction, And sometimes hand-in-hand with that does go gambling. So I don't know if that's something that we can, can address And make any amendments to or not, but.
I can, I can address that real quick. If they have a dual addiction, but they're, you know, they're primary.
Primary diagnosis, yeah.
It says alcohol or, or drug, it's fine.
Okay.
Our code does not provide for other types of addictions, So you wouldn't be able to advertise it as a gambling addiction Or, or other type of an addiction.
Fair enough. Yeah, yeah. And in, in our other centers, that we've ran other centers for about nine years now, And at that one, we, we do advertise sexual addictions and gambling addictions. And so, I mean, we can, you know, remove any advertising That we, we might have on our website currently. I'm not sure that we do or do not. We haven't actively been advertising for this location Just because we're waiting for it to obviously be firm and concrete with that. But in the past, we had done some advertising just to kind of test the waters down here To know when it was a viable option for us to branch, branch out into a new location. And we were, we were kind of waiting for things to, to become steady And run without us all the time there at our other program as well. And so that, all those things seem to be aligning, And, you know, we're excited to be able to, to move forward down here. So the, the building is two stories. One floor would be females, one floor would be males. It just helps to kind of keep the population separate For people being focused on their recovery And not being distracted with the, the opposite sex and all that sort of stuff, So that they can focus on what they came there to do. They're always with, with staff. If we, if we go out, We do go out into the community to go into a local gym and that sort of thing, Go to AA meetings, NA meetings, and those sorts of things. They're always with staff when doing those things. The one thing with buddy walks, and I don't know if this was just miscommunication on my part, But buddy walk in our vocabulary means that two clients That have been there over a month and have staff's, The confidence that they're going to return clean and sober, That a buddy would be a peer in program, not a staff member. So I don't know if that's, that's an issue or not, but. Clients are randomly drug and alcohol tested, especially if they've gone out for a walk, So that they know that when they return, there's going to be some accountability, right? So it, when you've got somebody looking over your shoulder, You're less likely to get yourself into trouble and to have a relapse than if you don't. And a lot of what we've been hearing in the news with relapses and overdoses Are, tend to be in sober living homes, And there tends to be a, a lot less supervision and a lot less accountability. And if somebody does have a relapse, they're not necessarily kicked out at those centers. In our center, if you tested positive for substance or alcohol, That would be means for immediate dismissal out of program. I'm not sure what else. If you guys have any questions for me, or?
I have one question, please.
So in that case, the immediate dismissal, they haven't left on their own accord, But you dismiss them. How do they get to where they're going? What is the plan?
We would probably call a cab. I had a, a brief discussion with the police department the other day, And I mean, it's our responsibility to, you know, kind of escort them off, Not the, the police's responsibility. But, I mean, if, if it was obviously a, some sort of domestic thing, not domestic.
Where would the cab go to?
Depends, it depends where they're from. I mean, ideally, there is enough demand in our, in our local community That they would go to their home. If they were from, from outside of the community, I suppose, to the Punta Gorda Airport, I guess.
Lynn?
What is the average length of stay of one of your patients?
Thirty to a hundred and twenty days. Unfortunately, a lot of the determination for how long that individual can be there Is going to fall into the decision-making of their insurance company, Which is kind of unfortunate, but that's just kind of the, the industry.
I'm glad that you have tried and true experience prior to coming here with another facility. And that was one of the questions that I got asked. And also, what is your success rate?
Success rate is a, is a very tricky thing, Because so much of it depends on the individual and how motivated they are to get better. If they're just here to get, you know, friends and family off their back, And they're here for, you know, a break, it, it's not going to work very well, Especially if they're only doing a thirty-day program. If they're, if they're genuinely wanting to get better And they're willing to do everything, all the work that's put in front of them And all the hard work that's asked of them, And they're looking at doing a lengthier program, The longer they're there, the greater the, the results are. The other thing is, it's, it's very difficult to gauge how somebody's doing Because most often, that gauging is done over the telephone by a third party. And so unfortunately, addicts are not known for being honest. And if you're asking them over the phone how they've been doing, You know, hopefully, we're getting the right answer, and hopefully, they're doing well. But just because they say they are, doesn't really mean they are. So, you know, with all the statistics in the industry, It's really hard to accurately gauge those. We have had some really good success with our alcoholic clients Because we've got a Soberlink program, which is a portable breathalyzer system. And so we, we really encourage people struggling with alcohol to go home with that unit. And, and what it does is, they blow into it morning, afternoon, and before they go to bed. It takes their, their breath sample, their picture, and archives it all. So with those clients, we're able to go back and actually look and see how they're doing. And with the clients that go home with that, they do really well. I mean, and it's a few-fold. I mean, they've got, they've got accountability. There's somebody looking over their shoulder. They know they can't get away with a drink because their loved one's going to get an email if they do. And so if there was a slip, a slip is defined as having, you know, a couple drinks And getting yourself back up on your feet and, and moving forward, not into a, a full relapse. If they do have a slip, it's usually caught really quickly when they're on a Soberlink system. And so we're able to get them on the phone, would do some of their aftercare, And get them dusted up off their feet and, and moving forward again. And so for most centers, when they're, they're counting track record, Small slips are not included in that. They're, they're looking at, you know, overall long-term sobriety. I mean, obviously, if a person is chronically relapsing and slipping, then that's an issue. But, so to answer your question, it's, it's really difficult too, right? Because so much of it is, is in the ballpark of the individual And whether they really want to get better. You know, industry standard is like ten percent. You know, ours is higher than that, but it's really difficult to put a number on it Just because there's, when you offer a program from thirty days to a hundred and twenty days, Obviously, the people who stay a hundred and twenty are doing much better Than the people who are staying thirty. But we do have lots of great success stories with people who do thirty days, But really are hungry for recovery and they want it. So, but the, the ones that stay ninety or a hundred and twenty days, Who maybe were reluctant coming in, Have had a long enough period of sobriety and a good foundation of learning tools And having a good toolbox to go and face the world with, That they still do well, even though they were reluctant on coming in. So it, it, very, very lengthy question to answer.
Kind of subjective, yeah. Thank you.
Yes, Nancy?
Yes, I had the opportunity to meet with Royce, And it was a good meeting, helped me understand what you do. How do you integrate what you do with other providers here? Such as Charlotte Behavioral or Riverside or the, which is Bayfront?
Yeah.
So that it's, it's a, there's a, working with the community. And I know that you, you are familiar with the Archway Institute That works with Charlotte Behavioral, so.
So in my discussions with Vicki at Charlotte Behavioral, They're primarily a detox center. They do have a few long-term beds where if somebody has finished detoxing And needs some safe place to be until they can transition into something more long-term, Then they've got three beds available for that. So they don't provide primary care. So they would potentially be looking at referring or recommending to us. Right now, they have to recommend down to Fort Myers or, you know, places further away. And so, I mean, it, it's nice to have something, something close by. In the beginning, we're not planning on doing detox, But if we don't apply for detox, we won't be allowed to do detox down, down the road. So we've included detox in our description. And, but at this point, we're, we're going to utilize the resources of the hospital And Charlotte Behavioral and that sort of thing to, to continue doing that, So we can, can focus on getting our, our program up and running Without having to deal with all, all of that stuff. At home, we do do detoxes, so we are very familiar with that. But it's, it's just, it's a little less to, to bite all at once if we can, can piece me a little bit. And at the hospital as well, they do detox only. They are starting or, and/or have done some outpatient treatment. The outpatient treatment they have been doing, though, Is mixed with their mental health patients. And so sometimes it brings some complexities Because they're coming from different worlds and dealing with different things. And so sometimes they don't see eye to eye. So there has been discussions, I believe, of doing an evening course For just drugs and alcohol on an outpatient basis. In our opinion, outpatient is a, is a great thing After you've got some foundation on an inpatient basis for maybe thirty days, And then you can start going to a, a less structured environment And trying to use the tools you're doing, But still have the support of a counselor and a team Where you can go and, and process the week's events and, and all, all those sorts of things. So the hospital as well needs somewhere to, to refer their patients to. And so right now, they've been having to refer them, you know, And forty-five minutes or an hour out of town, so I think.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Do you have any more presentations?
I think, I think.
Okay, so we'll, we'll refer back to you after the, we hear, and then if we have more questions. Okay, this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on SE-02-18, Now would be the time. Please take this podium to my right, State your name and that you've been sworn, please. And if you need to be sworn, we will swear you in, and you have three minutes.
I'm Eunice Wiley. I have been sworn in. I hope I'm not standing here just for formality's sake. I hope this isn't an issue that's really a done deal And that my voice is, will not be heard. Somehow, I feel that that's probably is what will happen. I stand because I am concerned as to the location of the proposed center. It is within the area of a community. A community that in the past had been known to have a lot of drug deals going on. I'm hearing about a buddy system. I stayed up last night and read everything I could find on this particular program. There were a lot of loose ends, a lot of questions I have. I don't see any completion if after ninety days. Let's say a person gets to seventy-five days and decide, I've had enough. I'm leaving. Where are you going? Where are you going? We're dealing with people who have addictions. I do sympathize, no, I empathize with families of people who are there with addictions. But so my community will be in a position of receiving again people who normally find a way to hook up for drugs. I don't see answers. Longitudinal studies, I feel are needed. We just finished asking for someone to get numbers. I like concrete things. I heard no numbers. I heard no one say, this is the amount of people that we've served over a number of years, and these are our successes. If we don't know, how can we make it better? What are we opening our doors to? We're getting ready for Sun Seekers Resort. When I went over the items that listed this program, the first two pages talked about the different type drugs that were in Florida, how they could come into Florida. That's all I saw. If I were an addict, this is the place to be. Punta Gorda. A possibility of four patrolmen in an area that when we call for them, I probably won't see them. My minute's up. I'm concerned.
You've got 20, you're on yellow, keep going.
I'm concerned. So what we need to do right now, you're our gatekeepers. What are we allowing into our new branding of Punta Gorda? Our children will depend on us. What are we going to allow here? What's the look at on that street? Think about it. Consider it for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please make your way to the podium for SE 02-18. State your name and that you've been sworn.
Kim Devine, Punta Gorda. I have been sworn. I'm not going to repeat everything Eunice said, but as the gentleman said, if someone disobeys the rules, they'll be kicked out. That means they'll be left, they'll have to leave, they'll go into our community and can do whatever they want. And other communities have that problem of attracting more people who are addicted. And the success rate is between 10 and 20%. And I also empathize, but I don't know if we can tell somebody they can't do something, but there will need to be more police, more people to take care of the problem. Thank you.
Anybody else to speak on SE 02-18?
My name is Martha Beretta. I have been sworn. I am a member of the Historic District Homeowners Association. I also have 38 years as a professional counselor and understand the difficulties with addictions. I come because I am very, very concerned about the security issues, about the individuals who walk away, about what happens to a community when you do have this kind of facility. It tends to draw drug dealers. I wasn't here in the 80s, but we had a very, very serious problem here. I would not like to see a facility that allows, that advertises the drugs that can be found in our community. Safety and security of our children and of the people who live in our community is very important. And so I am very much opposed to this. As a professional, I do believe in mental health. I have been an addictions counselor. But this, I do not believe, is good for our community.
Anybody else like to speak on SE 02-18? Please make your way to the podium. State your name and that you've been sworn.
If there is anyone else who has decided to speak and has not yet been sworn, please rise to be sworn at this time.
If you are going to speak, you can make your way up to the podium, please, to expedite the hearing. I would appreciate that. Anybody else to be sworn?
Oh, she hasn't, oh, I'm sorry.
I haven't been sworn.
Do you solemnly swear? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Go ahead.
Patricia Niles, Punta Gorda condominiums, here in Punta Gorda. I am a recovering alcoholic. I'll be celebrating 34 years this June 7th. I did go in and out of treatment. I know what relapse, they call relapse, is. Back in the 80s, they took that, it seemed like, more serious then. It wasn't given as part of treatment. It was expected to be something very unusual to happen, and that's how the programs were set up back then. I'm concerned on this issue a lot for Punta Gorda. And just hearing something like the walking with two clients going together, walking, that's just a very big flag for me. And what I was like back then, 30 days means rather very little. It just means you put 30 days together, and you didn't pick up a drink or a drug. That is it. You don't have any of the tools to stay off your drug or sober if you leave. I had to go, I ended up going to four treatment centers, and this was for alcohol. The first one I went to, it was Chit Chat, which was one of the top treatment centers in the United States. And I went back out drinking soon after that, show the tools that I had at that point. Went back to another one that was located in Binghamton, New York, near the hospital. Six months after that, I went back out. And each time, you get worse and worse and worse in your addiction, whatever it is. General Electric sent me to Marworth. I told them I wasn't ready to leave after 30 days, and they sent me to Alena Lodge, a long-term treatment center in Blairstown, New Jersey. And since then, I have not picked up a drink or anything else. I think if you're not familiar with this, you're out of your league. If you're on this city council and you don't know about treatment, I suggest you hold back today, and you get yourself some people from treatment centers that have been around the block. If you don't do that, you're asking for a lot of trouble for Punta Gorda. I know what my attitudes were back then, and I know I'm a nice person. I was a nice person back then. But this idea, just as an example, two people who are clients walking around in downtown Punta Gorda is mad, absolutely mad. I've got 30 seconds. Please, get some people. I will find them for you at these treatment centers that you need to listen to and find out what the real process is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wendy Mueller. I am only the recipient.